Good evening, my name is Sandra Fritz and the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of September 4th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Shrewsbury Media Connection and the work of John McDonald, and it will be rebroadcast between tonight and our next meeting on September 18th. It's become a nice tradition for us to open the school committee meetings for this new school year, and I will turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. It is our pleasure once again to open the school year with our first school committee meeting, to have Mr. Michael Lopomardo, who is a music teacher at Shrewsbury High School, and the Director of the Acappella Choir and the Shrewsbury High School Acappella Choir, who will first perform our National Anthem, and then they will perform another selection. And at this time, I'd ask that everyone please stand and welcome to the Acappella Choir.
(Music) 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 (Applause)
Please be seated.
(Music) 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 (Applause)
Thank you very much, Tora Acappella Choir. It's not surprising, many of the members of the choir were part of the choir last year when they won Gold Medal at the Micah Music Festival, and we're certainly very fortunate to have such a strong music program, and year after year we have outstanding vocal performances, and appreciate Mr. Lopomardo's excellent teaching that results in these performances. We do want to recognize and let those watching know who the members of our choir are. Our sopranos are Deepta Ganish, Fiona Ingersoll, Nidhi Ramesh, Leah Ryder, Hannah Valls who couldn't be with us this evening. Alto's are Victoria Ambrosino, Amoy Lynn, Corinna Muller, Anandita Punnamaraju, Sheila Sawyer. The tenors are Preston Karp, John Nichols, couldn't be with us, Liam Riernan, Daniel Stamarus. And our bases are Ajay Alamuri, Andrew Anderson, Ethan Clark, Colin Lovelace, and Purnav Vandlamudi. Let's have another round of applause for all of the members.
(Applause)
And thank you on behalf of the school committee. I mean, this is something we do look forward to, and I was talking to Mrs. Heffernan today and saying how when we heard you sing at the opening, the same rendition of Imagine, it made us both cry. So, it's always a wonderful way to start, so thank you very much.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public participation, and no one has asked to present this evening, but if someone wishes to do so in the future, please contact the school committee, we'd be happy to add you to the agenda. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report, does anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I do want to let the community know that we had a very smooth opening to the school year. I want to thank the Public Facilities Division in particular for their hard work to get the buildings ready, and we'll hear reports from them later in the agenda. All of our staff at AA Transportation and our bus drivers, and our crossing guards, our secretaries, both at the buildings and our team here at the central office for all the preparation they did. The administrative team, who does an enormous amount of work over the summer to make sure that everything is in place for a smooth opening, and of course, all of our faculty and staff. We had a strong opening day assembly and meetings, we had three excellent days of school last week, and then Friday we had a very successful professional development day. One part of it will be a report this evening on an alumni and student presentation that took place. So, we're off to an excellent start this year. A few pieces of news I wanted to share, one, over the, in the late summer, we were notified by the Special Olympics that Shrewsbury High School was honored by receiving the National Banner recognition. This is for their Unified Sports Program, and the quality of that program and how successful it's been, and pushing forward inclusive programming for all students. This is, Shrewsbury was only one of sixteen schools in Massachusetts and one hundred seventy-nine schools nationwide to achieve this status for the 2018-19 school year, so congratulations to our Shrewsbury High School Unified Sports Program. Also want to let the school committee and the community know that Mr. Jeremy Mullerella, who is the teacher for the Design Lab at Oak Middle School, applied for and was successful in receiving a grant from the Toshiba America Foundation of $3,911 for a STEM grant that will support the purchase of digital fabrication equipment, including three additional 3D printers, an industrial water chiller for the laser cutter, and laser cutter consumable materials. Mr. Mullerella is also planning for Oak Middle School to become a certified e-NAble Community School, which will allow them to use their 3D printers to print out custom parts for prosthetic devices for people in need. You had a presentation last year, and I know you had an opportunity, many of you, to visit the Design Lab last spring, it's an excellent program. As the amount is below the threshold requiring school committee acceptance, we're making you aware of it, looking forward to spending those funds and beefing up the equipment. In the Design Lab, that's a program that is really exciting and will continue to evolve over the course of this year. And thank you to Mr. Mullerella for taking the initiative to apply for that grant. And finally, at our opening assembly on last Monday, I gave out the traditional Superintendent's Awards, and I wanted to let the community know who the recipients are in 2019. In alphabetical order, the Superintendent's Award recipients are John Aloysi, who's a history teacher and the varsity football coach at Shrewsbury High School, Nicole Cormier, who's a Grade Four teacher at Patton School, Donna Crowley, who's a paraprofessional ABA Technician at Parker Road Preschool, Caitlin Maddox, who's the lead childcare provider at the Beale Early Childhood Center and the Extended School Care Program there, Darcy McCarthy, who's a special education teacher and community service learning club advisor at Oak Middle School, Beth McCollum, who's the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, right here in the audience taking the minutes this evening, Lisa Phipps, who's the cafeteria manager at Shrewsbury High School, who's been there for a couple of years, for many years prior to that was at Oak Middle School, and prior to that was actually at Floral Street School, long career and successful career as one of our food service managers. And then there are two named awards, the Thomas M. Kennedy Award, named after the former human and retired human resources director, Tom Kennedy, was given to Patricia Waterhouse, who's the Director of Special Education for our two middle schools. And then this year, we gave out two awards for the Jane M. Wilkin Award. One went to Tiffany Ostrander, who's the principal at Coolidge School, and the other went to Todd Bizidlo, who's also here this evening, the principal at Shrewsbury High School. Very well-deserving group, I could have given out dozens more frankly, but each year we try to pick a cross-section of folks who have gone above and beyond to make the district as best it can be, and it's an extraordinary group of people, and I was very pleased to be able to honor them with those awards at our opening assembly. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you. Our first-time scheduled appointment is a gift from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to fund Coordinator of Development in Volunteer Activities positions. Per school committee policy, 9/11, gifts of 5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Dupont, President and CEO of Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, Lisa Rabey, Marketing Director from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, and Dr. LaZott to come forward.
Thank you. Thank you. (Laughter) Hi. So, I would just like to personally thank Jim Dupont and Lisa Rabey for their generosity, not only in funding the Colonial Connections Program, and, but also for contributing to our two phenomenal volunteer coordinators we have here in the district, Kathleen Kohane, who is here with us, and Michelle Biscotti, each of whom worked tirelessly to find ways to bring innovative programs such as the Design Lab at Oak Middle School to our community. I found a quote today that made me think of you and the team here. It's by Marian Wright Edelman, who's a nationally-recognized educator and child advocate, who has made a significant difference in the lives of thousands of children and educators. Marian says, "We must not, in trying to think about how we can make a big difference, ignore the small, daily differences we can make which, over time, add up to big differences." And you have not only made small differences, but very significant ones in the lives of, to the lives of our students and our staff, our parents and community, and we're very grateful to you for that. And we look forward to continuing to work with you, Kathleen, Michelle, and I met today. We were going to meet for a brief period of time, but we met extensively just because we have a lot of ideas and students who are looking for opportunities to explore their interests. Jim came in this summer and met with me for quite some time just to talk about some ideas that I have and that he has and that we have collectively regarding how we can help our students follow their passions and discover more about what they love to do, and the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union is willing to help us do that, and I look forward to those opportunities and possibilities. And Jim also offered some words of wisdom around saving, and that is that we should all be saving 10% of every paycheck we ever receive from the time we get our first paycheck until the time we receive our last, and we should be in good shape. So, I'm gonna start now.
Yeah, I'm trying to tell my 23-year-old and 26-year-old to do that.
He had another tip about loans, but I'm deep in, so I can't, I'm not gonna follow that tip, but I thank you for that as well. So, we'd just like to say thank you, and we look forward to working, continuing to work with you.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. We're very happy to help. It's probably, it was already a year ago, nine months ago you guys came in, and it's been great. Michelle and Kathleen have been around for a little while, and it does make a difference when you guys reach us right on our turf. It's great to hear what you're doing, it's very exciting, and I'm glad we're involved.
It's a great way for us to enrich, you know, the lives in our community, for sure. Experiential learning is really, we're excited to see it.
Wonderful. Continue. We'll share more as we continue on, thank you very much.
And I think on behalf of my colleagues, thank you so much. This partnership, it enriches the lives of so many students, it enriches your lives as well, when we have this community partnership, and I think it's, it's something we need to even cherish more, because in, we like to, we want to do more, but, and there's always budget constraints. So, the funding that you're giving us is really helping us really move forward, some things we would not have been able to do without that support, so thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments? Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I also want to expect, express my appreciation, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, to Jim and Lisa and their team. Their generosity has been in place for many years, but really over the past year, they've really stepped up. And for those watching who may not be as familiar, the credit union last spring made a $400,000 commitment over the next five years to fund our Colonial Connections Program, which is funding Dr. LaZott's new position in full this year and subsidizing it in future years, is going to provide some opportunity for a van that will be able to get our kids to off-site kinds of learning experiences, as well as some other funding for, again, experiential learning types of things to connect, learning with the community, internships, and I know Dr. LaZott is already hard at work trying to build connections in the business community, that this project is going to enable us to do. Frankly, the credit union has been a, has been a, one of the sponsors of Kathleen and Michelle's Coordinator of Development in Volunteer Positions for a number of years, and the other sponsor was not, decided not to continue this year, and Jane approached them, I wasn't expecting them to step up and fund the entirety of it, given how generous they had just been, but we were extremely fortunate that they were willing to do that. Michelle and Kathleen have had a tremendous impact in their roles, and the school committee, may recall our members of the school committee, that Beth McCollum actually was the original coordinator back when it came on board when Dr. Bent was the superintendent, so about thirteen years ago or so, I believe, is when the position came into being, and it's always been funded in, either in whole or in part through donations from, from the business community. It makes a difference to be able to coordinate a lot of the activities around the district, and then when we added the development portion, we'll be fortunate in coming weeks, September, and I want to get the date right, what's the date? September 14th will be the dedication of the new stadium and Adams Field at Shrewsbury High School, and that is something that we could not have raised those 1.8 million dollars in funds if it hadn't been for the leadership that Michelle and Kathleen provided through their roles, and that's just one example, as well as the Design Lab at Oak Middle School, the other work we do through the Colonial Fund. So, we look at these kinds of donations as catalysts that enable us to go out and get more support and funding from the community, and so they're really, we think they're dollars well-spent, we're glad that Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union agrees, and we couldn't be more grateful for your ongoing support. This is a really important and worthy contribution, so thank you on behalf of everybody in the school district, and we look forward to the continued work together.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda...
Do we need to vote?
Oh, we do need to vote, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Hey, it's the first meeting of the year. Okay, I need a motion to accept a gift of $40,000 from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to fund the Coordinator of Development in Volunteer Activities positions for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Moving second, any further discussion or debate? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Okay, next, we are going to have Dr. LaZott talk about the Shrewsbury Alumni Presentation to Staff. On Friday, August 30th, the district held a professional development day for educators, and part of that opening was alumni coming back and talking to us, so Jane, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank my central office colleagues, as well as the Shrewsbury High School leadership team and others for helping us put this, helping me put this program together. We spent some time this summer, the, my colleagues and I, thinking of ways in which we could open the school year, and Amy Clutter has done a fabulous job bringing motivational speakers in and really thinking through an effective and enthusiastic way to start the school year, and we came up with this idea of asking current and former students to share their stories with the, all of the educators in attendance, which they did on Friday, as you say, August 30th, and it was a wonderful way to spend the first ninety minutes of our first professional development day. And we, the program was entitled, "Our Students, Our Legacy." The goal, here on the screen as you can see, was to really have all staff in attendance hear about what was most impactful to the individuals sharing during their time in Shrewsbury, whether they were preschoolers, or fourth graders, or seniors in high school, as well as, and perhaps more importantly, what could have improved their experience here in our schools. And every one of the four, fourteen individuals who shared when invited were very excited about the opportunity, they felt honored, several, using the word honored, to be invited, and really hopeful that their words would ring true to those in the audience, and that we would take their messages and learn from them. So, that we did. As we exited the Shrewsbury High School auditorium on Friday morning, people were seemingly abuzz and enthusiastic about not only the presentation, but what they were going to do with the messages they heard, and though there was not a formal part of a program for processing following, several colleagues shared that in their individual meetings, they had department meetings following, the opening conversations continued regarding the messages that were heard, words including inspirational, students recognized the learning styles of all, and how critical that is to our work as educators. A teacher texted me to say, "I just want to say that was an amazing opening, I loved hearing from the graduates and current students." One story was shared, and she felt fabulous about that because she had the student in fourth grade. One of the presenters, David Chapin, who graduated in 2002, emailed me on Friday evening or Saturday morning just to say it was wonderful not only to share, but to catch up with familiar faces and connecting with some new ones. He works at Morgan Stanley, and he said he gained a few customers following his sharing, which I thought was great, and so that was great to hear and wonderful to see the enthusiasm. David also shared during his time with us that he had listened to a podcast a few years ago, and it was a financial podcast of some sort, and the presenter asked, offered that we all ask our children three questions that are here in front of you. What are you good at? What do you love to do? And what does the world need from you? And those questions, I know spoke to a group of us who processed how we would answer those questions as adults, and so we offered and shared ways in which we could extend and ask our students these very questions, and see what we, not only what answers we get, gain from the students, but where we may take those answers as we plan and think about experiences that we recently shared, having to do with those that happen both inside our schools and outside of our schools, including internships and whatnot. Here you see two students who are current seniors, who were engaged in a project-based learning experience this year in their American Studies class at Shrewsbury High School. The class is taught by Jen Steinberg and Matt Brown. It's a several weeks-long project where they are asked to think about an issue that is relevant today, and one that they would like to, a question or issue that they would like to solve. So, TJ Mojera and Jack Foley became involved with the 1540 Connection. They held a big event at Shrewsbury High School that took significant planning, and it wasn't a one-and-done type of event. They are continuing their work with the 1540 Connection, and they both spoke very genuinely and sincerely on Friday morning regarding the opportunity to do this work. They openly shared that they would not have thought to do this had it not been for two educators who had a, you know, interesting and relevant project-based learning endeavor planned for their students. So, I thank the teachers, and I think grateful to 1540 for providing that experience to our students, and continuing to seek to be involved. As I mentioned, following the event on Friday, actually, and before, there was a lot of catching up to do, people meeting each other for the first time, some others reconnecting with counselors and educators who were impactful in some way, serving as mentors and, you know, friends during and following the high school experience. mentors and, you know, friends during and following the high school experience. We had two students, Ruby Lee and Marley Adalabachu, who videoed, sent videos in advance of Friday morning's presentation because they wanted to be involved but could not be present. And they were eloquent and sincere with their messages. Ruby videoed in from San Francisco, California, and Marley, who was currently a sophomore at UMass Amherst. And since the Friday morning, we have talked among us about other ways that we could capture stories of our students, again, current and former students, through video, perhaps throughout the course of the school year, because we learned that there were others stepped forward to say, oh, I'd love to share, or if there's any way that I can, you know, teach a lesson or be involved in some way, shape, or form this year, I would like to be. And so we're thinking about a potential video series of sorts, but more to follow. So we're grateful to these fourteen individuals. Ruby Lee, class of 2009, Jim Heels, class of 1989, David Chapin, class of 2002, Sarah Hopkins, class of 2010, Vinay Maliake, class of 2012, Hannah Hopkins, class of 2014, Michael West, class of 2015, TJ Mojera, class of 2020, Jack Foley, class of 2020, Sophia Peng, class of 2020, Anthony Quailey, class of 2012, Jessica Peng, class of 2020, John West, class of 2020, and Marley Adalabachu, class of 2018. So we're thankful to all of our presenters. We are also grateful to Shrewsbury resident Amy Kotsoffolos for designing some wonderful programs. She spent a lot of time on doing this and was very happy to do so. And to Curry Printing of Westboro for generously donating its services to produce over 600 programs for members of our school communities. And that is my report.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Jason?
I just want to, first of all, let me say, I, and I think every member of the school committee had the opportunity to attend this presentation for at least a portion of it. And I just want to commend you for organizing this. In my years being involved with the school committee, I've never seen anything like this before. I thought this was a very unique set of perspectives for everybody in that room, all of our staff and us at the school committee level to receive. And I also want to say that I appreciate, it was a very diverse group of students in terms of background, graduation year, career interest and post-graduation interest. So I found it incredibly helpful, and I'm glad that we tried something new, and I think we're going to get a lot out of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, it was an excellent presentation. I, there were so many quotes that I took away from that. I think that the advice that was given was practical. They had different ideas, and it was all constructive. And I thought it was very, very worthwhile.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, and I appreciate the time and the willingness of these students and graduates to want to get up in front of hundreds of teachers to present their experience. I thought that was phenomenal. Also, the candid, candidness of their stories, what they shared with us, I thought was really open and honest. So I really appreciate the perspectives, and I thought it was very impactful.
Great.
I would certainly echo this. It was a wonderful event. I felt really honored to be able to attend and hear some of the impact. And also really reinforced for me many of the things that we talk about as priorities, how those came back and hearing it through alumni, talking about mentorship, talking about project-based learning, talking about times when they didn't feel as connected socially to peers and what, what could have been done. So it was really wonderful to hear those touchpoints and know that we're on the right path, that those are still things that we, we can really work on.
Great. And I echo everything my colleague said. I, in the years that I've been doing this, I think it's one of the best presentations that I've had with students to really show us what happens after they leave. What did they gain here? What are the actionable items maybe that we should think about in order to improve what we're doing day-to-day? And I think we see success in all different ways. You don't, you don't become successful by this one certain way. And these students that presented all are successful, and they did it all on their own. And maybe they weren't top of the class or bottom of the class or the middle, but they found ways to be successful. And I found that really impactful and something I hope our district continues to do and look at more students, because I think they are able to tell current students, it, you might not be feeling great about what you're doing now, but that doesn't mean you're going to fail in life or any of it. Or you're doing really well, and you're going to still do really well, and you shouldn't be stressed out about it. So I think if we can continue this and make even this presentation available to students and parents, it's going to be really impactful and shows what that portrait of a graduate really looks like. So thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome. I neglected to thank Maggie Corab, who did video the presentation, and she sent me the link today. So we will get that out to people. And I welcome any ideas moving forward, but I'm happy that you enjoyed it.
Are we going to be able to show that on the local cable?
Yes.
Channel? So we'll run it there, and then we'll certainly get the link out or post it on our website, so people can, can link to it as well. And we'll make sure we get the opportunity to send that out. I, I think it is, I mean, it's something that, you know, really does connect to the portrait of a graduate piece that we did. I concur with what the committee member said. I really did feel it. It was gratifying that a lot of the advice was aligning with the work we're trying to accomplish over the next several years through our strategic plan. I appreciated that the alumni and students were asked not only about what worked for them, but, you know, for advice, about what we could do better and differently. And that's something that resonated, I think, with a lot of people, including myself. One thing that, you know, this is obviously just scratching the surface. It was a terrific event and a great way to start off the, the school year. And I know the feedback was very positive. In addition to Dr. Lozot mentioning the potential for even some ongoing video series of these, of this nature, you know, even prior to Dr. Lozot coming into her role, both Michelle Biscotti and Catherine Covey, who are both here, in their roles as coordinators of volunteer services and development, have started some work to see how we can better develop our alumni network. I know that's something the committee's been asking about over time. And now with Dr. Lozot on board, I know that that will take some, get some additional momentum behind it. We know that we have so many opportunities in order to connecting with alumni of the school district and finding out how, whether we can provide some of what they were talking about, there are opportunities for mentorship and networking for our students, current students, and even among the alumni themselves. Are there ways for us to develop opportunities to, for the alumni voices to inform what we're doing? And then, of course, you know, several of our current seniors presented, and student voice is something that's always been important to us in the district. And I think it was really good to see, for the teachers of our younger students to see the work that they had done sort of manifest. One of the things that's hard in education is oftentimes the fruits of one's labor isn't seen when you do the work, and it happens years later. And sometimes educators are fortunate enough to hear back from a former student, but that typically doesn't happen, is for a variety of reasons. So to be able to see how well people have done and what their pathways were just reminds all of our educators, no matter what grade they're teaching or what subject they're teaching, the impact that they have. And that's something I thought that was particularly powerful about this experience. So I want to thank Dr. Lozot and the team for putting that together. And we'll look forward to finding other ways to move this forward in the future. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Lozot gets to stay.
Yes, I do.
Next on the agenda, we are going to talk about the Mindfulness Director Initiative. And Todd Biziloff will also come forward.
Okay, well, thank you for listening to, to us tonight. We have an exciting opportunity, possibility ahead, as it relates to, as that opportunity relates to bringing mindfulness instruction and education into the, not only the Shrewsbury High School community, but to the Shrewsbury Public Schools. We feel that this is very much a partnership. The Mindfulness Director Initiative, which is based out of the Middlesex School in Concord, Massachusetts, is very excited to potentially be working closely with us during this school year. And I, Todd and I will educate, or educate you and the community regarding this opportunity. So the Mindfulness Director Initiative, also known as MDI, seeks to partner with the Shrewsbury Public Schools by, as I explained, facilitating the integration of mindfulness into the Shrewsbury High School community. During the 2019-2020 school year, this school year, MDI will provide a highly qualified mindfulness director to support Shrewsbury High School and the Shrewsbury Public Schools at no cost to the district. MDI is a nonprofit corporation registered here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This will be MDI's first public school endeavor. They, they currently are involved in two private school endeavors, one being at the Middlesex School in Concord, Massachusetts, and the other taking, being at the St. Andrews School in Austin, Texas. And did I skip ahead? So why mindfulness? Why now? Why think about this possibility and plan? We know that our, well, last year you listened to Noel Freeman present to you the outcome of the Regional Youth Health Survey data. And one piece of that, one important piece suggests that students at Shrewsbury High School experience high levels of stress. Interventions and supports are needed to help students and adults reduce stress. Research, research suggests that mindfulness can help ease anxiety and depression.
I would also add.
Yes.
The work we did last year at the high school, coupled with the youth risk survey behavior, behavior survey, rather, we looked at vocal survey data, which came through the MCAS, which was administered through all 10th graders. And as I review some of the documentation here, they measured three, the vocal survey measures three dimensions of school climate, including safety, engagement, and environment. We fell at around forty-nine. Our score was forty-nine, which fell in the middle seventy percentile. The range was forty-one to fifty of all schools. So we're a couple points away from being in the, in the top fifteen percent in terms of climate in the state for secondary schools. But the most salient things I want to share with the committee tonight were the troubling responses I found from students, which included their response to stress and student performance. Over seventy percent of students believe the following statement was always or mostly true, quote, "Because I worry about my grades, it's hard for me to enjoy school," while fifty-four percent believe that the, quote, "level of pressure I felt, felt in school to perform is unhealthy," end quote. So these are some of the things when, we've had lots of conversations about this at the high school last year, particularly focused on SEL and working with Dr. Lozot around this. It seemed to, to us in our conversations to be, we need to address it in a different way. So this is exciting for me, but we'll continue on. I just think some of the, the vocal survey data is important as well, which we didn't include in the slides.
Thank you. So here you see the top issues that were reported to you last year by Shrewsbury High School and Oak Middle School students. The highest, or the greatest of which are being stress, with close to forty percent of students, forty percent at OMS, and close to seventy percent at Shrewsbury High School voicing that stress is, they struggle with stress and ways in which to address all of the issues that come as a result of being stressed. So why, why mindfulness? Mindfulness is not a new concept. It is something that we have been working on here in Shrewsbury for the past four or five years, and I, I believe it's five, when our first group of staff from across the district took a course at the Center for Mindfulness, approximately an eighth of a mile from where we're seated right now, called the Mindfulness-Based Stress Reduction, an eight-week course that was well-received, well-attended over the course of a few years. Several of the folks who were the instructors at that time are now at Brown University at the School of Public Health, at the Mindfulness Institute that they were asked to open there. So they are no longer here, though there are several highly qualified and fabulous people still here, working for UMass and at the Center for Mindfulness. So since that time, and many people may have engaged in mindfulness prior to that time, we've really worked towards finding ways in which we, as the adults in front of our students each day, can de-stress and take care of ourselves in order that we're our best selves, in order that we can be our best selves for our students. So we know that chronic stress, or research tells us, that chronic stress significantly, significantly decreases focus, higher-level thinking and problem-solving, creativity and innovation, the ability to switch strategies flexibly, emotional regulation, and the ability to let things go. And this information was shared through our mindfulness-based stress reduction course, as were the, is the information following on the next couple of slides. So we'll continue. It also decreases chronic stress, impulse control, memory, and the ability to access information, the curiosity and self-compassion required for learning, physical, mental, and emotional health and well-being. So the what? Research suggests that mindfulness helps decrease stress. Shrewsbury staff, as I mentioned, have been learning about mindfulness for the past several years and have been excited. I can speak to the Sherwood teachers to bring what they've learned into the classroom to work with students, particularly during transitions, coming in from lunch recess, right before taking an assessment or a test. They've used, again, the strategies that they've learned and brought those into the classroom setting. We researched schools, and I, as I mentioned, two, two schools in particular, those who are working currently with MDI, engaged in mindfulness practices and programs, and spoke to representatives from those schools. I know Dr. McGee had the opportunity to speak to some people, as did I, and will continue to share a couple of the comments that we received. So references from the Middlesex School in Concord, Mass, and St. Andrews, I, I didn't say from which school did the comments come, but one, one comment included, "I sincerely believe that it being mindfulness helps students both deal with and prevent feelings of anxiety." Another noted that parents deeply appreciate the opportunity to learn more about how to be both mindful and present in students' lives, but all, in their lives, but also in the lives of their students. Two others include mindfulness has provided an opportunity for building collegiality among the faculty who regularly meet for our morning practice. Another, anecdotally, I think it has helped remove stigma from lots of topics related to feelings and mental health. What is mindfulness? There are many definitions, though the most common one that I could find is mindfulness is the awareness that arises when we pay attention on purpose, in the present moment, and in a particular way, without judgment, and with curiosity and kindness. How are we going to make this happen? The Mindfulness Director Initiative will support interested students, staff, families, and community members with the practice of mindfulness by offering a diverse set of optional offerings, opportunities, and supports. And I do want to highlight optional. This is not something that students are going to be made to do, or teachers are going to be asked to do, or parents or community members. But it's another, it's an option for people in our communities to get, to engage with if interested.
Yeah, I, I think, as Dr. Lozot stated, being the suburban, high-performing high school with high expectations, I think there's a certain number of people that are chasing this. I have to get into the coveted high school, college, or university, coupled with the pressures of, the academic pressures of how they, you know, academics, but then how do you separate yourself from peers on standardized testing, holding a part-time job, conducting community service hours. A lot of that's amplified by social media, as you know, which I think is pretty unhealthy. I'm not sure people understand the, the implications of what happens when they post those things on social media, like where I'm going to college or where I got accepted. So certainly when we think about So, certainly when we think about this program and being optional, there's certainly people that would want to participate in it and some that might not. In terms of my conversation with Dr. Lazzott and the things we've worked on, you'll find that the United States military is use, is implementing and inching in mindfulness into special operations, special operators that work in high-stress intensity, intense environments. They're using that as one of the mechanisms to deal with post-traumatic stress disorder and also for, to get laser focus on the work they have to do. Not saying our students are special operators, certainly, but reducing stress and creating a significantly better environment for students certainly would benefit our community. I think the other thing, when you look at research and think about mindfulness, you can also think about the number of people, celebrities or TV personalities that do this, but also professional sports teams are using this. The Atlanta Falcons, Seattle Seahawks, and the NFL are using this. I'm not sure if the Patriots use it, but I know that there's a big push within this to try and combat stress and also focus. When you have a lot of information, you need to focus, is one of these things that they've tried to incorporate within their own organizations. And that's more of a mandatory thing versus an optional thing. So, this is something that we're, I look forward to in terms of our conversations and really trying to provide opportunities for students to participate in ways to, for students, staff, and potential parents and community members to learn more about it and participate in mindfulness activities.
Great. Thank you. And we have a list of optional mindfulness experiences that MDI is offering, and this is just some of those opportunities. Consultation to teachers regarding integration of mindfulness into their teaching practices. Individual and small-group mindfulness meetings for students and staff, and potentially parents. Mindfulness mentoring and support for student athletes, coaches, and teams. Community mindfulness practice and support. Opportunities for students to be supported in mindfulness throughout the school day, whether that's before school, it's in the middle of the day, or after school has ended. A mindfulness club for interested students.
Mrs. Trombley and I worked on a focus group last year with parents, and we conducted about an hour-long interview with some of the stressors that parents were seeing within their families. And believe it or not, academics did not come up as a number-one stressor within this focus group. The number-one stressor that came up was athletics. And the amount of time, energy, and effort that students and families put into athletics was through club athletics or AAU, or the stress of making the team, the stress of playing time, the stress of all those things creates an interesting dynamic within families. And there was, there, through the conversations with a small group of about twenty people, twenty parents, there was a need, there felt to be a need to reduce stress in athletics. And how do we have student athletes manage stress in athletics? Through making the team, playing time, but also through competition and being able to be focused. So, we've done some groundwork around this and we're, again, continuing our work here, so.
Great. Some other examples. Meeting with interested members of the school community to discuss mindfulness and ways in which it could support them in their lives. Offer voluntary introduction to mindfulness courses for students, staff, parents, and community members. Offer theme-based mindfulness groups for students outside of regular school hours, such as mindfulness in sports, as Mr. Buzidlow referred, or how mindfulness can support test anxiety. Also, to begin to develop online resources for current students and alumni. So, next steps. The MDI director, and we can speak to his qualifications in a moment, but he will be working very closely with me, with Mr. Buzidlow, and the Shrewsbury High School community to meet with and educate students, staff, and parents on the topic of mindfulness. Again, these experiences are optional. We're looking for ways to help people de-stress and be less anxious and less hurried, and this is one opportunity that we would like to offer, again, as an optional activity to our community. We will very closely monitor the progress of this initial experience and will plan on reporting back to the school committee, definitely in the spring, but we'd like to do that perhaps before the first of the year, not only to review the possibility of a continued partnership, that would be the spring, but also as a check-in to let you know and to report out to you what type of feedback we are receiving. The data, as you might expect, and as we've discussed a bit, is mostly anecdotal data, qualitative data, comments from students who say, "I like this," or "This isn't from me." "I like this so much, I'm going to bring a friend next time." "I like this so much, I think it could help my dad." You know, we'll be surveying students and staff and those who participate in these mindfulness experiences consistently and regularly because we do, we need their feedback. The mindfulness director initiative wants that feedback, and so we will be happy to be sending updates, and not only happy to, that we'll, we'll look forward to closely monitoring the work as we continue through the year. Did you want to say something? You were just feeding off my notes. And finally, mindfulness education will take place again flexibly. The director, the proposed director is flexible with the schedule. It will be a two-to-three-day schedule, is well, very willing to come in early in the morning for before-school instruction and practice, as well as early evening, late in the school day, for those folks who prefer later in the day or early evening to meet, so that we can best meet everyone's needs who's interested in exploring. So, to summarize, the memorandum of agreement between MDI and Shrewsbury Public Schools is just for this school year, and that memorandum you have, and it outlines the expectations. MDI assumes all financial responsibility for the partnership this year. There is absolutely no commitment beyond the current school year. Future of the partnership will be determined in the spring of 2020. We believe that this is an innovative partnership that will address, help us address our strategic priority of enhanced well-being of all with a focus on the key issue of student stress. And with that, the, just to speak a little bit about the mindfulness director, the proposed mindfulness director, who will be working at Shrewsbury High School and in our schools. His name is James Frank. He has practiced mindfulness for most of his life. He's a young adult. He has training specifically in MBSR and mindfulness-based cognitive therapy. He has all of his requirements met and exceeded, teaching courses, including how to teach mindfulness to educators and others. He has worked with populations that have experienced real-life challenges, populations of people who truly struggle and have struggled with some aspect of life and has done that with great success. He has worked with young teens through older adults, and I'm happy to share more about him and his qualifications, if you would like. But we're excited and we welcome your questions, and we won't say anymore at this time.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Dale.
Well, there's a lot going on here. And I think this is, although it's a free sample and the pressure's off for us to pay for it right now, it's a big decision. I think that we've, I think the problem that we've identified, that we're trying to address is, is an important one in that there's no question that there are issues regarding stress. There's no question regarding the problems of impulse control or the pressures of social media and things like that. This is one approach. It has been tried in two schools. Both are very small schools, very select groups, very, very, very upper-middle populations. And so, it's, it's, it's a different mix in many ways. And those schools have actually used it as a marketing tool, so that the population that they attract is more likely to respond to this sort of approach, given that selection. But I took some time to speak to people at Middlesex, at the school in Austin, and also to one administrator who recently left Middlesex and moved to a different school. And they all speak very positively of it, and I think that that's important. They do say, however, that it is, it is something which does not solve all problems, it is not for everybody, and that they are in the process of designing it. And so, how this evolves is going to depend on, you know, where it lands, and the program that we end up with may need to evolve in a different direction than the places that it originated in. But I also think that it's critical that we find ways to measure as precisely as possible just what this is doing. We know what the problem is, and so we ought to be able to address that in some measures that will allow us to see what results we're getting. Because sooner, you know, in a year, we are going to be looking at adding to the overhead of running the department, and we want to make sure that those dollars are going to be well-invested. But the other piece that struck me in speaking to these different representatives is, they've captured this mindfulness word, which can appeal to some people and could be off-putting to others. And yet, if you look at what lies under it, there's a language there, and there are problems there that I think everyone can identify with. And so, at least as I look at it, from my point of view, there's a lot to be gained by sort of going to the common language there that everyone recognizes and talk about impulse control, talk about de-escalating things and being aware of your emotions and developing a language for identifying and discussing your emotions. I think those may be things that people can more readily identify as something tangible. Mindfulness has a certain zenny kind of flavor to it that may appeal to some, but may be the thing that keeps people who need it away.
Unfortunately, just to speak to the two schools, there are many, many schools that are working to engage their students and communities in mindfulness. Last week, we all, many of us got mindfulness in the classroom book, but we have lots and lots of literature through different avenues that have come to us that focus on mindfulness or use mindfulness as a strategy. If you look at any social-emotional learning SEL website curriculum book, mindfulness is there. You find it in PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, Universal Design for Learning, UDL. Mindfulness is an ingredient that, as you say, an optional, an avenue to take to help us re, better reach our students. And I think most importantly, as I think about mindfulness for students and adults, I think of self-awareness, and I think of self-regulation. And mindfulness is one way that many have chosen to use or learn more about, to become more self-aware, to become more self-regulated. And we know that our students cannot learn to the extent we want them to, and that we adults and society are not going to be healthy individuals if we're not self-aware and we're not able to self-regulate. And as we think about, as I think about mindfulness, I think about SEL, and I think about those two components of the wheel in particular, so.
Sure. I just picked up the National Association for Secondary School Principals Leadership Magazine. It came in the mail, I think, this week. I'm not sure what day it was, but within that, there's an article from Concord Middle School. Concord Middle School has implemented mindfulness practices three years ago, and there are some statistics within that. That's certainly a school that we could reach out to and find out what their research design or methodology is to collect that data. I certainly think, being connected with UMass and Brown University through Dr. Lazzott's connections, there certainly is, are researchers out there that would probably be willing to do some research design or methodology, looking at what type of design it would be, I'm not sure, case study, phenomenology, whatever that would be, and see if we can get some qualitative data, or if there's some survey instruments out there to measure, to get some really good measurements around what we're looking at. So, that's still, we haven't got that deep into our conversation. We have had beginning conversations over the summer about how to measure that and what that would look like, but I certainly think there probably are some opportunities for us to look at research design at university levels.
I just, I keep getting back to the notion that we identify this as a problem using fairly objective data. So, we have the youth risk behavior survey. We have the potential to add a few questions to that survey. And even when I was talking to these people from Middlesex, they were, you know, I would, what were the problems? Well, you know, there's increased absences, there's behavior issues, there are medications that people take for emotional problems. And they ticked off a whole bunch of things that they, they felt identified, this whole issue of stress and everything is a problem, and mindfulness as a potential way of mitigating it, but they had not used those things that, that they were concerned about as a measure. And so, I don't, I don't think it is quite as unattainable as it seems. We figured out what the problem is, so we ought to be able to figure this out.
Good point. Lindsay.
I think I would echo a lot of the comments of Dr. McGee. I have absolutely no doubt that stress and mental health are issues that we need to be talking about and probably talking about even, even more, and your position is largely to help us think that through. So, I'm excited and I'm eager to sort of see how this develops, and partnerships to help students are wonderful. It seems really clear that MDI is seeking a public school partner and that they would like to, like to move into this space, and that's, that's great. I think what's incumbent upon us is trying to figure out if this is the best partnership and if this is the best structure for mindfulness. I'm going to agree with you. I think mindfulness has a lot of potential benefits for, for our young people. So, for me, I also am thinking about how, how do we assess that? How do we assess changes in school culture overall? And so, when you're mentioning, you know, we'll ask the people who are involved in some of these programs, and I'm sure they're going to like it. Those who opt in are, opt in for certain reasons. I'm more interested in those who don't, but has, have they come around to think about mindfulness as maybe being important? That they started the school year as an educator thinking, eh, maybe by the end of the year, as we've started to implement these things, they're thinking, this might actually work for me or have some impact. But I think what's most important, if we want to measure impact, is we have to have some baselines. So, we have youth, youth data, but some of those conversations, whether it's with academic partners or not, to know where do we stand today, where are we three months from now in implementation, and how do we in six or eight months think about impact? And even if it's nascent stages, we're not looking to revolutionize and get rid of stress in an academic year. And I also see this as an opportunity for us to do a, do a, maybe a more refinement on what our vision is for this space for schools. Is our vision that we should always have a mindfulness director? Is our vision that every school should have one? Is our vision that this should be integrated and all teachers are doing this? Because that, for me, leads ultimately to some of those budget implications as well. And so, we don't know, but if we're not having that conversation during this academic year as we're testing this out, we'd be really missing an opportunity to figure out what is this, what does this future look like.
Jason.
I certainly agree with the comments made by Dr. McGee and Mrs. Heffernan about the need to evaluate. This is a big decision for the district, and it's something that since the proposal was first brought to us a few weeks ago, I've given a great deal of thought to. And it's a big decision because it's bringing a new position, even though it is funded by private dollars, into the school. There's the long-term question of, once we begin this program, once we walk down this road, what do we want to do in the future? That could involve financial burden on the part of the district. There are many implications, and there's also the fact that for a K-12 high school, we'd be the first to take this step with this particular partner. In spite of all of those questions, I am excited about this proposal, and I think that this is a good direction for our district and our high school to move in. First of all, it, as has been mentioned, it dovetails nicely with our strategic priority of enhanced well-being for all, but getting past the priorities we put down on paper, I know that stress among students, stress among staff, has been a paramount concern of this committee for a number of years. It's not just a generational thing. We certainly see that there are expectations and pressures on students today that are different, and on staff today that are different from what they were a number of years ago. This represents to me a creative approach to try to get at that, and I also think it's a smart leveraging of private dollars as a K-12 district that compared to other districts doesn't face what would be considered a certain threshold of need. We don't have as many opportunities to leverage private dollars as some other districts do, so I'm pleased that we are doing that. There are a lot of questions that are going to need to be answered through the year about the impact of this. How do we evaluate it, as my colleagues have referenced? What is our baseline? What data are we using? Are we collecting information that maybe some private districts that have used this haven't thought to look at? And certainly, you know, if it works out- And certainly, you know, if it works out, we're going to have a decision to make as a district as to how do we want to, is it necessary to continue to do this in the future? How will that manifest itself? If it doesn't work out, we may have a difficult decision to step away and to try something else. But that is a burden that is on all of us as leaders for this district. You know, I think that Shrewsbury Public Schools is a leader as a district. And one of the things about being a leader is sometimes you have to go first. And we're going to be the first of our kind to do this with this particular partner and I'm excited for that. I think that there's a real potential for benefit. I think there's a real potential for learning. There's a lot of questions to be answered as we go and I trust that those questions will be focused on and will be answered. But I'm excited to give this my support.
Just one of the comment, I group my colleagues and Mr. Palich saying it is a big decision. It's also a very important topic, improving mental health, reducing stress. We also have a limited amount of time to determine if this is working, right? So I think the more we can see, you know, examples of how this has been impacting high school and just the, the school community as a whole, I think is important. But also, you know, data is, is important to understand how we're measuring success and if this is something that is scalable. Based on the notes that I had reviewed that, that Dr. McGee provided, it seems like there's a, on average, maybe a two to three year ramp to get this fully integrated. So yeah, time is of the essence, but I, I do appreciate the creativity and, and the focus on an important topic like this.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's an exciting opportunity. It's no cost to us. It's something we've been talking about for a long time, but with any opportunity, there's also risk. And that is what we have to weigh as we move through this process. I agree with Ms. Heffernan, we really need to have that base data. How are we going to measure success? So we need to know where we're starting from. And through some of my, like Jason said, you know, we've all been looking into this ourselves. I found online that for, there's surveys and questionnaires that other areas have used for measurement. And, you know, to see how are we doing? But we don't have a lot of time because we will rapidly move into the, the budget cycle. So I personally would like a report maybe in December. If we can have an initial report in December, how are we doing? You know, what are the numbers of people who are, you know, students, staff and families who are participating? Because it's, you know, it's optional. So it would be nice to know the numbers of people. And, cause we're going to start in January with that budget cycle. So we need to have some basis ourselves as we move forward. It is a corporate trend. I mean, the company I work for is also, we're talking about mindfulness. They're not as close as you guys are in moving forward though. But I think it's, it's a great opportunity and I think we have to, we have to do it, but we have to carefully look at it as we move forward. And my only other comment would be, I think how we communicate this to students and staff and parents is going to be key. Because you're going to have those individuals who do feel, oh, like it's the zen. Somebody had a comment to me, well, if my child is failing in math, I don't care how much you're going to do in mindfulness because they're still going to be stressed out because they can't. And we're like, this is dovetailed. It's not separate, it's part of our culture, part of our educational process. And I think parents really need to know that. So communication, I think is key. And those are my comments.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer.
Well, I appreciate the comments and, and the feedback from, from the school committee. I certainly want to thank Dr. Lozot for taking the initiative to reach out and look to this as a resource, that is a no-cost resource to try to do some initial work in this area. I think that, you know, there are certainly other options that might have been, you know, not accessible to us because they do cost money. And sort of find someone who's a willing partner who is doing some work and, you know, not the first, but maybe the first public district that they would work with. So there's a real potential for a win-win partnership here. And of course, Dr. Lozot's role was created to try to build different, new kinds of partnerships. The phrase that comes to mind for me is nothing ventured, nothing gained. I think that if we're going to try things out that are different than what we've done before, to avoid the, doing everything the same way we always do it and then expecting somehow to get different results. We know that that's important for us to try new things and not everything we try is going to work. We're hopeful and optimistic it will be of benefit. We don't see where there's a real downside in terms of causing harm from any of the research or the experiences or the references from the schools who are working with this particular partner. You know, I do, you know, hear loud and clear, we have to, and we'll have to think very carefully about, you know, what are some early signals of success that would be important for us to, to review? Obviously, the, the challenge for any educational research done within a school district or a school is it's very difficult to isolate variables in terms of designing research studies that, that do those kinds of things. It's very difficult. There's other things that we are bringing to bear right now on the issue of stress. We've added an adjustment counselor thanks to the support of the school committee. That, that's hopefully something that will have an effect as well. We are giving the regional youth health survey within about the next week, I think. That's typically a biannual survey. We've been able to work with the, the Western Department of Public Health to try to make that annual, we're hoping to make that an annual survey. We certainly won't have a year-over-year result with this being a factor, you know, as far as that particular piece. We pulled out a few items from that to do some local survey last year, maybe able to do something along those lines. And, you know, we certainly will be able to, to be questioning the community in different ways. Certainly those who are engaging as well as those who aren't, you know, is there a higher awareness of it? What are some of the early signals of success? Because I certainly would be careful to pull the plug on a, on a race so early that you don't really know how, how well you're going and moving towards the finish line. That said, and I know mentioned, you know, the idea of future potential financial commitments on the district's part. One thing that I'll be asking Dr. Lozot to do is if, you know, we see some early signals that are positive as we go through the year to see if, you know, there may be partners that we can engage who may be willing to contribute to something like this. So that would again, we can avoid, even though the, the partner may be over time weaning from the resources they're providing, we may be able to bring some other alternative resources to bear, to fund this kind of programming outside of the regular budget. So that's something we'll continue to take a look at as well. Because obviously the less financial risk, the more opportunity there is for us to innovate, given all the different competing priorities we have. And we certainly hear you loud and clear on that. But with that, you know, from my perspective as superintendent, I strongly endorse moving forward with this trial opportunity for this year. I think there's a lot of potential upside and minimal risk. And I would ask the, the school committee to support it and will certainly be, look forward to updating you in a few months as to how it's going and then making a recommendation in the spring whether to continue.
Excellent, thank you. As part of our packet, we all had a chance to review the memorandum of agreement. It was also looked at by legal counsel. May I have a motion to approve the enclosed memorandum of agreement to establish a partnership with the mindfulness director initiative for the 2019-2020 school year?
So moved second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion or debate? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, under finance and operations, we will have a report on school facility summer maintenance. And here to present is Ms. Angela Snell, Director of Public Facilities from the town of Shrewsbury, along with Mr. Keith Baldinger, who's also Public Buildings Division Manager for the town of Shrewsbury and Mr. Collins.
And if I could, as I just set this up and they come up to the table to present, if I can make a couple of introductory comments. Let's see, there's a lot of pictures here. I want to make sure that you see.
And if I could, just make a couple of brief introductory comments that we're happy to have. Angela Snell, the Director of Public Facilities and Keith Baldinger, Public Buildings Division Manager here. This summer, as is most summers, is the time where most of the heavy maintenance gets done in our school buildings. There's lots of collaboration that has to occur between our different departments well in advance of each summer in order to plan what projects might be doable. And also in concert with the extensive, extensive summer programming that we have throughout the district. So, you know, typically from, in the contractor slang in our industry, it's referred to as the summer slam. And how much work can you get done in, you know, basically a six to eight week period? And just for added context is, you know, just as an example that, you know, both Sherwood Middle and Oak Middle School were fully occupied. Every single space in those two buildings were used this summer from early July to the middle of August to provide summer programming. So there's lots of coordination that they have to work around and work closely with us to plan. So we, we really appreciate their thoughtful planning, their collaboration, their ongoing communication and the fact that things don't always go as planned, especially when you're relying on outside contractors for some of the work. And they have provided a written report for you that you have in your packet and here to talk more specifically about all the details and, and show the pictures. So I'll turn it over to them.
Welcome.
Right, thank you. So just thank you for giving us the time to update you on the school projects. Before we get started, I just wanted to thank the school leadership team and especially Patrick Collins for his support and cooperation as these projects were coordinated this summer. And thank you to Keith and the maintenance and custodial staff for all their efforts, doing a lot of the work and working with all the contractors. You know, like Patrick said, working around all the school schedules and our contractor's schedules. It's a lot of juggling that goes on before the summer and during the summer. I'm going to turn it over to Keith who has a presentation and has some pictures of the different projects that took place.
So like Angela said, thank you very much for having us. And like she said, we're here to talk about projects that basically we've done in the past few months. Not all of them are during the summer, but pretty close. But I just think it's important that we talk about the division a little bit before we get into that. So we maintain just under a million square feet of building space and about eighty-four percent of that is for school use. And one of the things I figured out in the short amount of time that I've been here, it's been about nine months, is come to realize how talented our staff is. So we have three supervisors, we have five maintenance craftsmen, in the process of recruiting a sixth and fourteen custodians. And these people literally make this, you know, keep it all together for us. Without them, the lights don't come on, toilets don't flushes, doors don't open and about a hundred other things a day happen because of them. And the reality is we can't do what we do without them. So in, in the office, there's Angela, myself, and we have one admin. And I, you know, we, of course, we manage staff and the bills and payroll and all that stuff. Since April alone, we've put out over forty contracts for projects and services. Not to mention all kinds of small procurements that we have for goods and services that are just, it's countless. It's, it's, it's a pretty constant thing. So we do this using a team approach within the division, but we also get amazing support from other town departments, including the school department who, like Angela said, I mean, they're, they're definitely a partner for us. And Pat and I are pretty much on the same schedule. And I'm pretty, I think his extension is the only one that I remember by heart.
Speed dial.
Yeah. But, so you've all received a list of projects. Pat said only have fifteen minutes, so I won't go through all of them. But, so I basically have some photo slides here. I'll talk a little bit about each one. These are kind of the highlights of, of our summer. So. So this first project, and it's actually my favorite project of the summer. This is the Oak Middle School gym. We did a complete sanding and refinishing of it, all new game lines. We had a terrific contractor on this project. They met their deadlines and very, very happy with how it came out. This next project is kind of a small project, but it's Todd Leaf, Todd Left. So this is the east entrance of the high school. It had some concrete repairs that we needed to done, but needed to be done. But we also put in a speed table, which is something we're testing out to try and slow traffic down a little bit on our loop road. This was actually designed by the engineering department and a local contractor did the work for us. This next project, so the, these are the planting beds, raised planting beds behind Sherwood. They were basically overgrown and not very well maintained. And so we had a local contractor come in, removed all of those, put in new loom. And we put down the sod. The sod is a, it's called, it's a micro clover. It is drought tolerant. It is designed specifically to not need fertilizer. It was, and it was also grown with no herbicides or no pesticides. So we thought it was a good change and it'd be a good place for students to, you know, they can lay out there and look, read, look at their phones during recess or whatever they do during recess, so.
Do their mindfulness.
Right. So this is another project and it was a longstanding project that needed to be done. These, this, this two photos are actually the inside and the outside of the doors at Coolidge in the gym. So we, we did three sets of these doors, one in the gym and two in the cafeteria. And these were put in place for security reasons, so it's for easier lockdown in, if so needed. Because the, the previous ones took minutes to lock those doors, these now take seconds. And these were put in all by in-house staff. We just bought the materials and, and they installed them. This is Al Potellus, who is the Oak Middle School Senior Custodian, he's working on his lawnmower. He is one of our longest-standing employees with roughly thirty years and he's been in that building the entire time. This is Spring Street School. So at Spring Street, and this is the cafeteria, we had the asbestos tile removed over the summer and we had new VCT installed. And this is Bruce Anderson, another longtime thirty-plus year employee who's the Coolidge School custodian. And that's Artie Rose in the back, who's the Patton School custodian and they're waxing the floor, the new floor. The Spring Street custodian would have been there, but his wife had a baby about ten hours before this photo was taken. This is, this is actually a photo last week that we also re-sanded and refinished the stage in that same, same space. That's Ernie Bishop and that's a typical face that you get from him. He's our electrician and he's changing light bulbs in the Oak Auditorium, which is not a very easy process. There's another gentleman behind there, that's Paul Fox, he's a little shy. But that's about a three or four person project to do that because of that staging they have to set up and all that. We do this every year. This is actually May, right before town meeting. But it's one of the things we do. This is the Patton Cafeteria Gym. This same contractor did the Oak floor, did this one. Complete sand and refinish, probably hasn't been done in thirty to forty years. And I think they came out amazing compared to what it was to what it is now. It's pretty great. It's probably the last time we'll be able to do that, but hopefully we'll be able to keep this for about ten years if we use the right maintenance process. This is Parker Road Playground. We had a new fencing installed early this summer by a contractor around the playground. And also to note, Parks Division is part of our public facilities and they take care of doing the mulch and, and at all the playgrounds. And they help us out quite a bit with a lot of our work. This is another big project we did. This is Floral Street School. We put all new carpet in the hallways and the administration areas. So this is the hallways, kind of in progress and that's what they look like when they're done. And this is the administration office. And kudos to Lisa McCubrey and her staff. They picked out the colors and not me. They, they actually picked a single carpet for all the hallways. And there's the color in that carpet and for every different color hallway, it's actually, it's pretty neat. This is also at Floral, and so these are, this is, these are gutter guards that we had installed. These were built by the students in the metal fabrication program in Aspen Valley and our staff installed them. This is one of a few projects we're doing with them. They're also going to build a shed for our custodians at Spring Street and at Coolidge School this fall. This is the back of Floral, kind of out by the outdoor classroom. This was all overgrown into the roadway. We got a contractor come in, took out, cleaned it all up and rubbed it all out. And now it's been mulched. And this is all ground cover and a few years, this will cover the whole hillside. This is a juniper product and then there's some flowering stuff in the middle that you'll see when it grows. This is getting ready for school at Floral in the front. That's Bob Esposito on the right, he's the custodian in this building. And then on the, on the, excuse me, on the left and then on the right is Billy Martinez from the Parks Division. And I believe that's Christie Baldino, but.
Yeah, what is that?
Probably shouldn't call that out. But again, this is something, you know, the, the two divisions worked together to get this ready one afternoon. But again, this is something, you know, the two divisions worked together to get this ready one afternoon. This is actually a bigger project than it looks like. This is a new sink in Room Seven at Parker Road. This is a special education classroom. And I was pretty amazed to find out how many students and staff are in that space during the day. But so we installed a sink. Quite a bit of work there. There's probably about forty to fifty hours of plumbing work in that, because they had to work in a tunnel underneath to get the pipes there and stuff like that. The cabinets are actually repurposed from what used to be the conference room in the special education office that we converted into two offices over the summer. And they moved it and we put a sink in it. And this is all in-house work by our staff. This project, this, these, these are the entry mats at Sherwood Middle School. It was literally, it was done on last Friday, on the thirtieth, replacing the old mats that were in there. The old mats had slots in them, and they were very difficult to clean. When we took up the old mats, there were an amazing amount of dirt underneath them that we moved. So now everything will stay on top, and we can just vacuum and much cleaner, much healthier. This is the new sign. Actually, this is the old sign from Oak Middle School that we refurbished in-house. The division owns a vinyl cutter, and with the assistance of Joel Kimble from the Highway Division, he did the vinyl work and installed it, and our staff put it back up. So this is actually the end of a project. This is, so at the high school, Oak Middle School and Floral Street School, we removed some underground storage tanks. They were originally put in place for fuel oil. It's a capital project. Had about a $268,000 budget. We had, we had a few issues at the high school, but we'll still be at about $200,000 for projects completed, and it's done. And they, because of the issues, they were only two days behind their schedule. So they did a very good job. And this is Floral. This is the first tank they did, and it's just the company working. So this photo here is from the Beal Groundbreaking. Some of you may have seen it. And the important thing about this photo is that little girl is the niece of one of Fontaine's employees. And she is a 2021 first grader, and probably will be end up at that school, depending on how you do the districting. But I just thought that was, I mean, that's kind of one of my favorite photos this year.
Follow us on Twitter and Instagram. We combined the Parks Instagram with, to made it to public facility. So we're starting to post pictures of our projects and so you can see them. We try to tag the school that we're working on in it as well.
And that's it for me. Any questions? Be glad to answer any from any of the list I gave you or any of these photos.
Well, thank you. And I've learned a new phrase for my lawn, micro clover. Like, what is it? It's micro clover. It's just, don't worry. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just thank you for all the work that your team has done in a short amount of time. I mean, that's like two and a half months of work. I can honestly say the Patton School CAFA Gym Natorium, it was served to repurpose it, has never looked better, so. Thank you.
Jason.
First of all, just thank you for the work that you do. Most everything we talk about here exists in the spaces that you guys create and keep in great shape for us, so thank you. Did just have a, just a particular question. The report that you had provided in our meeting materials mentioned with regard to some of the HVAC systems, there was a controls upgrade. It says currently no control access onsite. I was just curious.
Correct. So we have, well, it's not, so at Coolidge and Floral Street School, we have limited access onsite at Coolidge, and we do have onsite access at Floral. We don't have remote access to either one of them.
I got you.
So that's, both of those buildings are at the top of my list for getting that back soon. And a lot of it's related to just updates. Systems still run on Microsoft XP, and we have to get them up to.
So there is control access onsite. It's a matter of remote control.
Yeah, remote control. And that's, unfortunately, that is when we needed them out. Like, remote control is something we need, because, you know, during the winter months, you want to pay, be able to pay attention as opposed to driving to every building to make sure that things are working. You want to be able to look at something and say, yeah, the heat's on. So it's kind of, that's where we struggle with.
Got it. Thank you.
We're in the process of hiring, trying to hire an HVAC technician to be part of our maintenance staff, too.
I would just love to say thank you. And in addition, as has already been said, two weekends ago, I was with my kids at Coolidge going to play soccer, and we were watching the Parks folks, you know, tidying up the playground. And my kids were commenting, oh, yeah, and they did this. They were at Patton. They'd gone to their open house. So they, the kids notice, and I know the staff certainly appreciate, we all appreciate when our, when our workspaces are freshened and livened and know that that matters. But the amount of time and it takes to coordinate, those are busy buildings. And so I appreciate that we don't make it easy for you, as we like to make maximum use of all of those spaces. So thank you for working with us. Appreciate it.
And thank you. I think this is a humble report. You do a lot of work year-round, and I've.
Not only give me fifteen minutes.
But I think it's one of these, people might not understand the amount of work that goes in, especially during the summer, you know, the desks aren't up, you know, the chairs aren't on desks and nothing's happening. These buildings are used. You have a lot of planning that has to go into way earlier than the summer to get this all done, especially if you're dealing with outside contractors. So, you know, huge thank you for all the work that you do. And I think, again, it was a humble report. You do a lot of work that goes way beyond this. And Keith is a valuable member of the Beal Building Committee, too, so he's got lots of roles helping us. Dr. Sawyer?
I want to add my thanks, of course, on behalf of everybody in the school district. And we, along with Mr. Collins and Mr. Baldinger and Angela, we, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar, we all made a tour of the facilities just at the end of the summer prior to school starting. And Patrick and I were very, very impressed with not only the quantity of work that was done, but the quality of it. And I think that the reorganization into the new DPW and the different divisions, you know, really is working well from our perspective. And, you know, some of that structure, of course, and some resources, but mostly it's the people. And I think that all I hear about from the field are raves about the communication that Angela and Keith are providing. They're being proactive. They're following up quickly if there are issues. We cleared a lot of backlog of a lot of issues that may have been small, but they were nagging, and they do make a difference in the quality of the experience that our students and staff have on a day-to-day basis. You know, the sink in the special education room, that special education is one of our ELC programs. And we have lots of young children, and it's a lot of hands-on stuff. And, you know, for staff to be able to wash their hands there rather than have to go down the hallway, you know, I mean, I'm not sure we'll have a study of it, but I'm hoping that, you know, that's where staff illness issues, I mean, just the whole idea of hygiene, be able to wash their hands more frequently, and for the kids to be able to wash their hands more frequently, that's a game changer. And we appreciate the work that's been done. And I, you know, I think that, you know, the pride our community can take in the quality of our facilities is substantial. And I, I was mentioning to, I think, Ms. Cloder the other day. I happened to be visiting a facility in another district that shall remain nameless. That certainly is not a community that lacks for resources, but the quality of some of the stuff that was there on campus was not, it was, to me, sort of shockingly bad. And to me, it sent a message about, you know, the value that community was placing on its school facilities. And I think, you know, for us, the message people get if they visit us is that we have, we care very deeply about education and about the quality of the experiences our community gets with our schools because of how we're maintaining them. So thank you for the work that you and your team have done, and we look forward to the continued work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Malone will provide us with a personnel hiring report for the 2019-2020 school year.
It's all about the people. So hello. Nice to see you all this evening. Really active hiring season, and have some data and things to share with you about what we saw. I'm certainly happy to take questions at the end. I always like to start with this slide to show members of the community who maybe haven't tuned in in the past, that we do have a rigorous process for all of our hiring. We get a number of applications through the schoolspring.com, which we contract with. They send our ads out to all of the other places as well, but it's a good gathering place. Allows us to see our applicants and view full application packets. Phone pre-screens, interviews, selection committees are formed, there are face-to-face interviews. There's involvement from many different people at this point, including student involvement at the middle and high school level. A teaching demonstration. Some people are great at interviewing, but not teaching. So the demo will help figure out who talks a good game and who actually delivers a good game, which is really important. And the kids are very forthcoming about their viewpoint on that and having an important voice. We do reference checks within the last two years. The district leadership team has updated each other with a list of questions, and it goes on for several pages, and leaders can choose which ones they want to utilize, but basically to disconfirm their decisions, that once they've gone through the whole process, it's very natural to want the references to tell you what you want to hear. And so to dig deeply into reference checks and really understand what challenges or positives we might get by hiring this candidate. Finally, there is an interview with Dr. Sawyer and me, and we do a background check. The Massachusetts Background Check, which is the Corey, and then the National Fingerprint Background Check, which is the safest. I need to commend two people on my team, Chris Matiro and Katie Fox, who really worked tirelessly on this. Katie primarily with our paraprofessional hires and Chris Matiro primarily with our professional hires. The Corey and safest background checks were primarily done through Katie Fox. It's a heavy, heavy volume. At times, both Chris and I assisted, but there is just a lot of activity that goes on, and I really, really wanted to give a shout out to those two, because they're just so important to the functioning of the HR department. Something that Schoolspring allows us to do is let us see how many applicants we had to our positions overall this year for our professional-level positions. We had 2,598 applicants looking to work here, and 2.16% of those who applied were appointed to a professional position. If you look at our paraprofessionals, we had 497 applicants, and 8.85% of those who applied were appointed to a paraprofessional position with us. In your detailed report, you can see how that compares through the last five years. I think we do see, particularly with paraprofessionals, that we are still in a full employment economy in Massachusetts. And you can see that the percentage of those we've hired has gone up a little bit. And it's tough to fill some of those paraprofessional roles. You know, I think I come up here every year and talk about ABA technicians being a critical role. Those are the folks who work in those ELC rooms where they put the new sink in. So we can say we have a new sink for them to wash their hands. So the total professional-level searches conducted were fifty-six. I thought that it was really important to point out that we had a number of promotional hires this year. Four previous paraprofessionals became teachers. Two of our teachers became special education team chairs. Two of our team chairs became directors. And one principal, Dr. Lazzott, became an assistant superintendent. And I think that that's very, very healthy growth and shows where people can go within this district. I was particularly interested in the four paraprofessionals who move forward into teaching positions. I think that's a very healthy number. We had four transfers. Three of them were teachers who moved to a different school. One actually moved to an entirely different role in a different school. We had one classroom teacher who's now an adjustment counselor, so that, at a different school. We had two rehires. One of them was a name that got a shout-out on Friday morning at the professional development. So it was great that her first PD day back, she got a big shout-out from a former student. And we also hired a, forty-one new-to-us hires. So people that we didn't necessarily, we hadn't necessarily ever had employed for us before. Our registrar and office assistant, we hired two. One is a rehire. And forty-four paraprofessional searches filled, and that was by, actually, the Wednesday, the second day of school. Little more data here for the school leadership team. We had two hires. One of the two was a new position. That was Dr. Lazzott. And one of the two was a replacement due to her promotion, and that was John Kelly coming in as the new principal of Sherwood. I thought that this was interesting. This is professional teaching in special positions, so this is fifty-four of these. We had seventeen resignations from these positions this year. Those were due to a wide variety of reasons. We had people whose spouses were moving. We had people who chose to go back to school full-time. We had people who wanted to make a complete lifestyle change. So there was a variety of reasons why people resigned. Thirteen were hired for new positions. That's a total FTE of 11.3. If you go back to the budget documents, that matches up there. Eleven were replaced due to retirements. Eight were replaced due to transfer promotions. So in other words, if someone got transferred or promoted, that left their old position vacant. So there was a little bit of a domino effect. Four were hired as full-year long-term substitutes due to leaves of absence. Primarily, those are people who take advantage of taking a full year unpaid for child-rearing. It's unpaid leave, doesn't cost us anything, but then we put in a long-term substitute for that period of time. And then one position came out of hiatus, as Dr. Sawyer had mentioned previously at school committee meeting. That's the Director of Elementary Special Education. But the overall turnover rate due to resignations, so that's saying, okay, we have 500 teachers overall, and seventeen of them resigned. That gives you that 3.4%. So typically, that's the number people want, want to look at, is how many people actually resign. And that's a very low turnover rate in almost any profession, 3.4%. When you get over to the paraprofessional positions, 88.7% were due to resignations, which, again, doesn't surprise me, given the situation with the economy. We did have those four replaced due to promotion and one replaced due to retirement. We had no new positions in paraprofessionals this year. And the overall turnover rate due to resignation is 13.7%. That's, you know, thirty-nine out of our total number of paraprofessionals. I just wanted to note, that is also actually quite a low number. Like, it feels like a lot of churn to us. But if you look at other industries right now, like the restaurant industry, it's like 54% turnover right now. So when you start to compare it to some, some other kinds of things people could be doing, the turnover is less. And I think that's because we get a lot of really dedicated educators who either have their license or working towards their license or have been very committed to us for years. And I think that's, that's what drives our lower turnover. And then I always like to end with the thank you, because we do have educators, administrators, parents, and students who participate in our search committees, and that is very helpful. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Barb. Any questions or comments? Jason?
Just a comment. I'm in awe of this presentation every year, and I'm really glad we receive it, both from an operational perspective, but also it's diff, we all know, given the work that we do, that we have really high-quality, top-performing staff. But most of the ways that we see that are indirect, it's in performance data where our students are doing well and so forth. But to look, you know, 2.16%, you're going to be in the top 2% to teach in shoes break. And it's high this year, because it's been a lower. But to look, you know, 2.16%, you're going to be in the top 2% to teach in Shrewsbury. And it's high this year because it's been a lower number in the past. And that's.
Yeah, 1, 1.8%. So it's up a little bit.
It's just, that's astounding. And it's, it's, it's one way that we can see the quality of professional that comes to work in this district. Not only are we very selective in who we take, but obviously there is a very high degree of interest in working here. So it, it is just another way of seeing not only how well we're doing as a district, but how strongly our staff are performing. So thank you for the presentation and the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. It's a lot of work that you do. Neil?
It's a great presentation. I just, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm off on another tangent. I'll talk to you about it later.
Okay.
I don't want to eat up time.
Thank you.
That'll be fine.
So you're good.
I'll look forward to that call, Dr. McGee.
Yeah, Barb, thanks for all the work you do. It's a lot of work over, you know, it's a shorter period of time that you're doing this, a lot of interviews. And I was sitting at the beach this summer. My niece was flying into Logan late. So her poor friend, her poor friend got stuck with me for about an hour that she didn't know she was going to go. And she's an educator in the district. And it's like, oh, you're not really liking it. I really would like to go to Shrewsbury. I'm like, then apply. Oh, I heard it's really tough. I said, it is tough. You know, they, you're going to go through a process because we look for good educators and paraprofessionals. And she happily got a position. She's thrilled. She's just so happy. And she said, I didn't know if I should. But I said, you know, they're looking for good people and you're a good, you know, somebody that we would want. So I, I think, you know.
Well, thanks for sending her the, our way.
There you go. I couldn't read my Kindle, so I wasn't happy. But I think the other thing that you mentioned, and we've got career growth opportunity. You know, we do have people who are able to move within the system, which is something we want to retain, good employees. And we're fortunate, you know, sometimes things don't open, but this thing's open. We're able to move people around. I think that's another hallmark of the district. People love to work here and we are able to accommodate their growth as professionals as well. So thank you.
This is definitely.
One follow-up question? I'm sorry. It just occurred to me. I'm, I'm wondering, as you look over the last few years, what are the areas that are particularly difficult for you in order to either attract or, or retain that you, you note? I'd love to just get a, get a little.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
In your mind, what's.
Essentially, the, the same ones have caused the most difficulty. Special educators who have a background in severe special education, that's a particularly difficult license to get. And so that is a very difficult area to find really qualified educators. The other one is English, English language learner or ESL, English as a second language. That has proven to be a very difficult area for us in just about every other district. And then I would say that the third is some of the foreign language or world language teachers. It's very hard to find, for example, a Latin teacher, you know? That's, that's, that's a difficult search. So.
Yeah, okay.
Those, those are the things that really give us a lot of.
Thank you.
You know.
That's helpful.
Going through sometimes rounds of two or three postings to pull up the, the candidates that we're really looking for.
Barb, what's the total new FTE? We've talked about, you know, we've had some move-ins and what's the total new to the district out of this summer?
Total new FTE?
Yeah, totally.
11.3.
11.3. Thanks. Dr. Sawyer?
I just want to thank Ms. Malone for the report. You know, as she mentioned at the beginning, lots of people do a lot of hard work. And a lot of these searches are happening in the spring when things are extraordinarily busy just on the day-to-day operations of the district. So there's a lot of time investment that goes into this, but we know that it's well worth it, given the outcomes we get because the decisions we make in terms of who we decide to hire to, to work with our children is, is probably, has the most influence over the quality of what we can deliver in terms of education. So we'll continue to pay a lot of attention and invest a lot of time and energy in our personnel processes. I do also want to mention, school committee is aware, but since it's our first meeting of the year, people are paying careful attention, noticed that there's a slight title change for Ms. Malone, where she is now known as the Executive Director of Human Resources. Made that title change because there are some other districts that have a sort of director-level positions, but are, are much more of a, a human resources processing kind of position. As you know, since the position came on board in Shrewsbury many years ago, now it's been a, a executive-level strategic leadership role in, in the superintendent's cabinet. And wanted to make sure we were signaling to other districts as well as internally of the, the type of role that Ms. Malone plays. And, and, you know, she gets excellent feedback every year from our leadership team with whom she works very carefully. And, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have her in the role. And again, I think it speaks to the importance we place on our human resources processes and the importance of our people that we have a role that like this in our district. And I appreciate the work Barb does in it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we are going to hear a report on fiscal year 2020 grants. Federal and state entitlement grants are part of our funding source for all school operations. Mr. Collins will present that.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a brief report, no PowerPoint. You have the written report in your packet. And this is an annual event. There is a requirement for, excuse me, school committees to accept all federal and state grant funding on an annual basis. And so that is another reason to provide the report. I think probably the best way for me to summarize this is that the chart that I provided shows you the array of both federal and state grants, totaling just over $2.15 million for fiscal '20. It's a net increase over the prior year of $294,193. I did include in this report not only just the so-called entitlement grants, which all school districts get based upon student demographics and, and allocations, but also the last three in the bottom are competitive grants that you've heard about before with respect to funding counselor positions. The Safer Schools Grant to make some improvements up at Shrewsbury High School. Those were competitive grants. So those three alone account for about $260,000 of the $294,000 increase. And then the rest are allocation grants. And those are effectively level funded. And that is, was, was our assumption in, in the overall in terms of what our change would be for fiscal '20. We, we based our budget upon level funding. So we're really close to that. The tricky part in putting together a budget, of course, is always timing issues with all of the information. But with respect to these allocation grants for this school year, that my recommendation is for you to vote to accept. We don't get that information until the summertime, like late July. And so after, way after our budget process is done is when we get that information. There's a short turnaround window where a unified district grant application has to be submitted to the Department of Education with detailed budget pages showing them exactly how we intend to spend those funds. And then they have to review that and, and approve it. So that in sum is the report that I have for you tonight. Again, it's an important funding source for us. We're fortunate that on a one-year basis, we are up on a five-year, five-year basis, things look flatter with about a 6.8% increase on, on a five-year basis. So this is not a huge, has not been a huge area of growth for us. It's been pretty static, but we're fortunate for fiscal '20 that we have some improvement. So that is the report that I have for you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Jason?
Just a quick question. The Title III English Language Acquisition Grant, I noticed there was a slight decrease. It's a small amount. But what's the determining factor for that award? Is it a number of students who meet a certain criteria?
Exactly. So that's, that's going to be based upon our, our submission of student data to the Department of Education on an annual basis. And they'll look at ratios of students who are identified as English language learners in proportion to your total population. And then, you know, the distribution of the number of kids across the state, across all districts. And then kind of allocate, you know, determine how much they can allocate out to all of the public school districts for that targeted funding. And I should say that, you know, the, the majority of those, of these allocation grants are, that most of them are allocated for special education purposes. There, there is also the so-called Title One, or Education for Disadvantaged Children, or so-called Title One Grant. Just over $196,000. That is based upon our students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. Again, that's a, just a data-driven allocation formula. And those are targeted reading and sometimes math services for that population. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Sawyer?
No, thanks for the report. I want to appreciate Kim, it's Patrick also in the office who does our, our grant coordination with the department. There's a lot of highly technical pieces, along with the various directors. And Amy Cloder does a lot of work on these as well to put these together in the, in the summertime. Once it's a tight timeline to get these done so we can make sure that the funds are able to be allocated appropriately. And again, just want to reiterate the fact that we did seek and receive those competitive grants is, is a real difference-maker for the coming year and years ahead. So we appreciate the work that went into those as well. And we'll be reporting on that work as we go with some of those new programs. And once they're, they've been on the ground for a bit. But appreciate the work and ask the school committee to approve.
May I have a motion to accept all FY '20 grant funds noted in the enclosed chart and use such funds for their intended purpose?
So moved to second.
Moved to second. Any further discussion or debate? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from the school committee workshop held on August 20th, 2019. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, we'll have those marked as accepted by the committee. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved to second.
Moved to second. Roll call vote is required. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan? Aye. Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.